Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
They don't.
My Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the people of our country. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A moment of silence, please. Thanks very much. I need a motion to approve the August 21, 12, and August 27, 12, school board meeting minutes. Is there a second?
And if I can just clarify, so at the last board meeting, the board asked me to clarify whether we had to approve the retreat minutes, and I could find nowhere that says you can actually just have a meeting unless you're with your attorney, so I'm recommending you approve them, those minutes.
Are there any changes, additions, deletions, corrections?
May I request that we sever the minutes?
You may, so.
I thought we'd just made a motion to approve the minutes of many.
At this one, we just.
Well, the minutes, no, actually, it was 8:21 and 8:27.
Oh, I'm sorry, my motion's only for 8:21.
Okay, let's start with that.
I thought we were doing it separately as well.
Suzanne, would you second that?
Yes, absolutely.
Looking first at 8:21. I would reiterate the same question, but I won't say it all again. Seeing no changes, additions, deletions, and/or corrections, all in favor of approving the 8:21, 12, board retreat minutes as presented? Opposed, or abstentions? Abstain, or abstain? I would entertain a motion on the 8:27, 12, school board meeting minutes.
Can I make that motion?
And is it seconded?
How seconded?
It's seconds. Any changes, additions, deletions, corrections, errors? Seeing none. All in favor of approving as presented? Opposed, abstentions? Hank and I abstain.
Yep, I actually have multiple correspondences coming around. In here are two letters of thanks from your two students who got scholarships last year, as well as a thank you from Kathy St. Jean for her bell. You have several letters, one is documentation from the Department of Ed that they approved our professional development master plan. This was a plan you approved at the end of the year. You also have a letter from Frank Gunter thanking Janine LaRoche for her many years of services as a nurse. We have a letter from NEASNC, lots came in over the summer, submitting, approving, they voted to accept the five-year progress report from Gothstown High School on our accreditation. We have a letter of recognition on Steve Fountain, who completed the process for a certified athletic administrator through national certification, which was a huge thing for us. We asked him to try to do that, and he was able to finalize and complete that. We received a letter from the University of New Hampshire, Dr. David Upham congratulating Uriel Orkot for being, who's our strings teacher, for being selected to do a national presentation at the upcoming American String Teachers Association National Convention. And then you have two substitute reports. Lots of good information, all good stuff.
Commendations and good news.
I can go ahead and start, because I was able to attend the Bartlett open house that night, and Sue and I were there, we had a pre-meeting, and it appeared to be very well-attended and very cheerful, and I was able to see a couple of smart boards, not quite in action, but a couple of smart boards where the teacher had put her students' names, and they were able to drag and kind of move them around and have some. But I'm still very interested in seeing it really in action, you know, as the chair of the technology committee that's never met.
Why didn't you call a meeting, huh?
I did, but it was few ideas.
Any other commendations or good news?
From the elementary schools from Glen Lake, they're reporting that every member of the Glen Lake School community, students and staff, signed their school constitution today on Constitution Day. And each member on the school pledges, one, to be safe, two, to be kind, and three, to take care of our things. And all the signatures are posted on a large bulletin board near the lobby. And Bartlett reports that it held its open house on Monday, and the turnout was excellent. Everyone was able to meet the teachers and classmates and learn about classroom expectations. Sue Tremblay and Dan Cluier attended the open house, representing the school board. This week, they're starting the kneecap preparation sessions with third and fourth grade classrooms. Senator DelSandro visited Bartlett's fourth graders this morning to discuss the political system in New Hampshire and the US, and the students asked questions and answered the senator's questions, and a group photo was taken with the students and the senator. This was part of the senator's visits to all the schools in the district. And from Mabo, the volunteer orientation and fingerprinting session on September 12 was well-attended. There were about 25 adults who filled out the paperwork and were fingerprinted that night. And a thank you to Carol Kilmister and Kathy Riley from the Human Resource Office for attending this evening meeting. And we also had our first and third grade parent information nights last week, and we'll be hosting the second and fourth grade parents tomorrow night. The classroom teachers invited parents and guardians to the classroom for an hour-long session that focused on academics, classroom expectations, and the family-school partnership. And as part of Constitution Day, the senator visited Maple Avenue as well and talked to the fourth grade classes, and we appreciate his visits each year.
Thank you very much.
I'll go. We have a lot going on at Mountain View, lots of good things. For the 25th consecutive year, our teachers are pairing with the Lions Club for the International Peace Poster Contest, and they're working with the Pinardville Lions Club on that. We have 207 students participating in our sports teams, so it's nice to see high participation numbers. As an extension of the PBIS initiative that we're doing at our school, they're starting Adopt a Barrel, so teams are signing up to adopt like a barrel of flowers, and they're going to be responsible for taking care of it, and they'll be out front in front of the office, sort of enhance the community and give the kids a little sense of pride and responsibility in taking care of their barrels.
And I would just add, I will send around information if the school board would like to adopt a barrel.
Yeah.
You may, so.
That'd be highly recommended. The beginning of the year is open on a positive note. We have 18 new staff members that are integrating well. About 40 parents showed up on the fifth and sixth grade lot to see students off on the first day of school, and another 35 parents came to meet admin for seventh and eighth grade. PBIS is being openly welcomed by our staff. I went through some of their feedback from the last teacher workshop day on 9/11, and they are really excited about the school-wide quiet signal. And they said that pretty much, there's a lot of comments about the overall feel in our building being positive, and so they're very happy about that. They're hopeful and think that MBMS is heading in the right direction and appreciate the consistency of the PBIS guidelines. We've completed two fire drills, and we're happy to say that we emptied the building in two minutes. We were fully accounted for within seven minutes, and everyone was back into school, resuming classes within 11 minutes, which is pretty impressive for the large size of school that we are. We have 30 students across grade levels going on the summer reading field trip to Mount Onconunik for the Summer Success Reading Program. And then MVP started their magazine drive today, the school assembly. And the fifth and sixth graders, this area is freshly painted, which is nice, and they have some new four-square courts, so the kids were very excited today.
So a quick question, if there are members of the school board who want to participate in Adopt a Barrel.
Yes.
Are there specific times at which people are collectively working on the barrels, or will they do that in some cases during class time because the groups are class-specific? Do you know?
I don't know the specifics on it yet, right now. We got the handout, which I think you have, and I think we have the same one.
I did.
I mean, I've read every word of it, though.
It basically says that you've got to take responsibility for maintaining.
Well, no, no, I got, yeah, I got that part, I was just wondering.
Is there a specific time, you asked me what the team.
Well, only because it might be nice to the extent that there are people who are interested in doing it from the board, if they could coordinate it so that they're there working at the same time the kids are.
All right, I'll bring that back. Miss Gillis is organizing that, and right now, we're just signing up individual teams to let her know that you're interested.
They can pair with somebody.
Right.
But I think it's pretty much whenever the groups, whoever the groups are, that agree to do it, have time.
I think that'd be great, that'd be a really good thing.
Thanks very much.
I'm from High School. We have summer reading meetings coming up on Friday. We're going to be meeting, we had a total of 900 students, reading titles suggested by 59 adult staff members here, 44 different titles, and we're going to be having book discussions Friday morning around 9:30 for about 90 minutes. So that was pretty successful, a lot of students and working on literacy, so it should be interesting to see how the discussions go. That was all developed by Maureen Brown and the English president. Uriel Orkot and the string, the GHS orchestra, she wanted me to share their, they had a summer concert, had seven orchestra students performing for the Arts Festival in July at the Fells Estate in Newark, New Hampshire. Casey Donahue, Hannah and Abby Coloney, Joel Russell, Marissa Stevens, Hannah Chudak, and Sophie Trotter. They played for over an hour, and people were very impressed with the students since they were putting Gossdon High School in the limelight. They did great things. I was also going to share the NEASNC letter, that Frank shared it with us, and they mentioned that it's fairly rare to get an all-positive letter from the NEASNC with just commendations, and so they're fairly proud of that. And the area of personalization, that was really the last thing we were working on, and we were getting some details, we're going to pretty much go with home rooms, which we already have, and we're going to be meeting a little bit more recently and a little bit, for a little bit longer time, and we'll have the students for the whole time that they're here, for all four years. Whenever we get report cards or progress reports, we'll have longer meetings with those students, and we won't be their advisors, not prosthetic, just their home room teachers.
So I'm really curious about something. Home rooms are not new to anybody, but it sounds like how you're going to use them is a little bit new. Is there also going to be some underlying, and this is just curiosity, designed so that the students who populate any given home room have some specific connection or share a common interest with the teacher, or?
I think they've worked on that, and then the goal is that that teacher will have those same students for the four years. And this is part of NEASNC requires us to have some type of advisory, and what we were trying to do is figure out, we already have a lot of personal connections with the students, and Sam, fill in if I'm missing any pieces of it, but I know we tried to make it natural versus a, here's an advisory period and everybody has to go, but what are natural times that we can advise students and work with students, but also maintain that consistency of personalization over a four-year period of time? So I don't know that it'll be every Monday we'll be having advisory, but it will be, I'm guessing when there's needs and things come up.
Yeah, and we're still.
Still working on it.
Yeah, developing that, but so far, we're going to be meeting when we have progress reports and report cards, and we discussed things like that, how to group them, and we decided on just random assigning by grade level and alphabet pretty much, so that you don't have cherry picking or any kids being in a group. They might decide to switch advisors because they want to be with their friends in their home room, that kind of stuff, so in order to avoid any of that, we're just going to randomly group them.
Thanks very much.
So if I can.
I have a, sorry, I have a printout of what they gave us so far for home rooms, and a letter from the NEASNC.
If you want to pass those around, they can look at them. And so I'd also like to introduce, one of my goals has been to bring more teachers and students before the board to kind of hear more about what we're doing, and as you've heard, we instituted PBIS at the middle school, and so we asked the leadership team, or parts of the leadership team, to come and just do a short presentation on what PBIS is and what it looks like at the middle school. So I'd like to invite them up, and maybe can you guys introduce yourselves as well?
We're just going to bring our chairs up.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right, well, well, Balki's passing things around, if you want to fill in commendations and good news that have been thus far overlooked.
Well, you may have heard of it, but the Secondhand Chic Fashion Show is happening September 21, 7 to 9 p.m. here in the theater. It's sponsored by the Community Clothing Center and Gothstown Public Library, and it's also featuring GHS Art Department and the Culinary Club with refreshments. And if you bring non-perishable food items, you can be entered into a raffle. Freshman elections for student council are happening next week. The open house is coming up still, Thursday, October 4, 6:30 to 9. And the Art Honors Program, the seniors were accepted into Art Honors, are Erin Hussey, Scott Shaft, Jessica Wallace, Neil Hadley, Hemi Metz, and Kia Kamunjin. I always get her name wrong. Friends are there, but I still get it wrong. It's very hard, but, yep, that's it.
Thank you very much.
Yes, yep.
So Ginny, I always look to you to fill in any details that we might have missed, are there any sporting events that we should know about?
There actually are a lot of them. I know the girls soccer team, I believe, is undefeated at this point. Football team beat Memorial, which was a huge upset in a great game. They did lose to King this week, but it was, they were kind of out of their league with King's, so they played well and, you know, played up, I think. Field hockey, which Megan is on, what is your record?
We're two and four, but we're definitely improving. Like, our last couple of games have been against harder and harder teams, but we've been doing better and better, so, and we've changed practices around, so we're actually doing, I don't know, I think it's going really good these last couple of practices, so I'm excited for next game. And we're playing on turf. It's going to be way better.
Yes, for field hockey.
Yes, it makes a big difference.
Thank you. I'm going to turn the floor over to you.
Okay, thank you. Can we start with introductions? I think probably everyone knows Barb, but.
Well, I'm not going to bring, there's some new. I'm Barbara French, I'm a special education teacher at Mountain View Middle School.
And I'm Karen Roden, I teach fifth grade Language Arts and Social Studies.
I'm Jenna Barnes, I'm an eighth grade math teacher at Mountain View.
I'm Melissa Brigatiano, I teach Language Arts and Social Studies with grade.
I'm Brian Balki, Assistant Superintendent, I think most folks know me, and.
And I'm Jess Farre. I'm the school board rep here, but I'm also on the PBIS leadership team.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to come share a little of the exciting news about the PBIS program that we have going on at Mountain View. I've provided you with a brief handout that gives you a little bit of information. If you aren't familiar with PBIS, I can give just a real quick overview. PBIS is essentially, it's a research-based, multi-tiered behavioral model, and essentially what that means is there are sites and trainings that have occurred all over the country. It is a research-based program that helps schools create consistent, positive behavioral expectations, and the research has been strong in showing improvements in school culture. I can talk a lot about the nuts and bolts, but I really want you to hear from the teachers. So what we did essentially was, in February, we applied for a grant, a competitive grant through Safe and Drug-Free Schools up in Concord, and we were awarded a $20,000 grant in conjunction with the Hampton School District. And essentially, the nature of the grant was to provide training from Dr. Howard Muscat, who comes from the New Hampshire Center for Effective Behavioral Interventions and Supports out of Suresk. And we've met with Dr. Muscat a number of times, and this incredibly dedicated group of folks, and the entire leadership team is on the back of your handout, so you can see all their names, have met throughout the spring and over the summer to develop a really strong PBIS model at Mountain View. So I can keep talking, or if I can turn the floor over, I'd like you to hear from the teachers about some of the benefits that have been realized so far, and then we're happy to entertain any questions the board may.
So, one of the things that I noticed right off the bat was the staff buy-in. I dare say we probably have 100% buy-in with the staff. We had a very brief overview of it on our first September 4. It was well-received, but again, on the very first day, you know, we're being bombarded with all this new information. So we followed it up with another meeting on 9/11, and each one of us have received such positive praise from the teachers. One of the comments, actually several of the comments, were that is one of the best meetings I've ever been to, ever, and these are coming from teachers that have been teaching for 25 years. We worked very hard on this through Brian's leadership and the staff buy-in, they love the behavioral matrix, the fact that we have a common language. And if you're ever in our building at Mountain View, I would ask each and every one of you to ask each of our students, what does it mean to have PAWS pride? And they will hopefully answer with respect, responsibility, community, and pride. But besides the language, I hope that you see them living it, because each one of us has taken a lot of time with our students and to be able to teach what does it mean to be respectful, responsible, and have that sense of community and pride. I can speak as a parent as well, I am so happy that, I have one child at the high school now, but my son is in sixth grade, and he sees it, I see it, on the very first day, we hit the ground running with PAWS pride.
And with the staff buy-in, we have, the culture and climate has seen a significant change. You see a lot more staff in the hallways greeting the kids, it's much more of a positive environment that you're seeing, and you're hearing it from the kids, from the teachers, and it's not just something that's happening in the school, I'm seeing it when I coach cross-country. So me and the coach, if we see a kid doing something wrong, is that PAWS pride? What should we be doing? And so it's not even just focusing at the school, but it's also outside of school reinforcing that, that, you know, we're doing something for the school, we're representing our school, we need to have PAWS pride. So it's really shown improvement on all spectrums.
I'm down on the fifth, sixth rank, so I don't get out very much, so I can tell you what I see down there. And we've had concerns over the past years over the arrival and the dismissal of the students coming in, it was like a big horde of students coming in and a big horde going out, and it was quite scary. What we've kind of instituted is, you know, with the PAWS pride, walking in the hallway is single file or two-by-two, we're kind of still discussing that, and to the right, and the kids are doing it almost automatically, a couple reminders, and there's no like, oh, everything, it's like, oh, yeah, sorry, you know? In the morning, we're all lined up, the fifth and sixth grade teachers are all out there, and we're high-fiving, happy Monday, it's Friday, it's just a new energetic way to, you know, say hello to the kids, and I gotta tell you, by the end of that line, my hand is killing me. They look forward to it, like, I'll be walking in the hallway, it's not arrival and dismissal, and I'm like, high-five, and it's just such a different climate, it's positive, it's just, everybody's loving it, and they're taking it all in, so.
I think the biggest thing that I've heard is that teachers are very happy that we're having these conversations, and we're talking about consistency, and most people that I've spoken to, I don't think there's anyone that I haven't heard, about, they really thought that the meeting that we had on September 11 was the most meaningful thing that they've done in a long time. They really enjoyed it very much, a lot. So there's a lot of buy-in, it's changing, it's causing our culture and people to be happy and people to know what to expect, what's expected, everybody, from the kids all the way up to the adults, is really making a change. And so I'm just going to tell you some of the little things that are going on. There's a teacher in the eighth grade who says, I'm going to put PAWS pride in every paper that I send out to my kids, and he's already started to do that. One of, the success people are probably the most encouraged and the most upbeat about it, it's really wonderful to see them, they've developed their own little song, they sing it in the hall, the kids are all starting to learn it, they have a little dance that they do, stay to the right, stay to the right, they're singing it all the time.
It might be a Bee Gees kind of.
So things like that are really causing people to be, to smile and to be happy and to have a change in culture. Also, in success, they're very creative people, and they came up with little posters of PAWS, and Leslie was using them one day. Things like, a kid had gone into the bathroom, and there was some, somebody had put paper towels on the floor, and the bathrooms are one of our targeted areas, and that's an area that we've, we're having consistently a lot of difficulty. And that's an area that we've, we're having consistently a lot of difficulty with. There's been, last year, year before, we had a lot of vandalism, a lot of dirty stuff in there. There was some paper on the floor, and Leslie happened to be walking by and saw a little boy and said, can you just pick that up?
I didn't even ask him, I just said, hey. And I was like, ah!
And he picked it up.
And he picked it up without even me asking.
I mean, we've been talking so much about this stuff that they know that's all it takes at this point. So, I happened to be in the classroom when she came in to give him her little thank you, a little paw that the success people have made and are giving out all over the time, every time they see somebody do something good. And so, everyone in the classroom, when Leslie acknowledged the young boy and said, you know, thank you and you deserve this, I wanted to see it. And then the teacher said, oh, why don't we make a little wall over here and we'll put them all up? We'll see how many we can get. So, we already have a little wall up in that classroom. And the kids will all clap in their hands, and now they can't wait to go get more kinds of, you know, little PAWS. So, those are the kinds of things that are happening on a daily basis. And it's really causing a positive environment in our school. And we thought you all should really hear about it. It's, what's wonderful about PBIS is that it's consistent, we can take data, we can prove to people what's going on. We've talked about at the beginning, what are your perceptions and what do you see? And we're having really great conversations about how to change things. And it's making a very big difference, a big positive difference in our school. We're focusing on four things that you probably should know about. The hallways, the bathrooms, the cafeteria, and arrival and dismissal.
I think the other unique piece is the positive piece. You know, it's so easy to say, hey, cut that out. But if you can turn it around into something, it just makes more sense.
There's a lot of conversation going on about what's a positive way to say that. And you get a whole lot more with positive stuff than you do with negatives.
It's easy to do, but sometimes you forget when you're so carried away in the day. It just seems so natural now to every, it's almost like this natural thing that's occurring. You know, like that, maybe in the classroom, let's create a wall, like that was just off the cuff, it's so natural now.
And I'll just reiterate some of the things that they said. And, you know, Brian, when he was talking to the staff on the teacher workshop day, he just reiterated that our kids have always known these things, they just have kind of forgotten when they arrived at Mountain View. And now we're just reminding them. And it's really nice to see that they have it in them and that they can really meet and exceed our expectations a lot quicker than we thought. And they are really receptive to it. I mean, I was a little shocked by that, especially the eighth graders. I thought they may be a little bit more challenging in accepting the PBIS, but they, they're all really accepting of it. And it's really nice to see the consistency and the common language. I'm in the seventh grade wing, so, even though we're sixth grade, so I kind of get to see different grade levels. And you hear the same common language throughout the building. And I think the teaching end has really allowed me to focus more on my teaching than on the behaviors. And with just like a quick reminder of, is that PAWS pride? Is that showing responsibility? Is that helping the learning community? You can kind of squash things really quickly. So I think on the teaching end, it's allowed me more time to teach. And I'm getting through things a little bit quicker than I have before, so I really appreciate that.
Just to add to Jessica's too, when she was talking about eighth graders, I was kind of wondering how they'd react to with the PAWS pride. But I've actually, in my classroom, if someone like dropped something on the ground and didn't want to pick it up, I've heard kids say, is that PAWS pride? And I was kind of thrown back like, wow, like they're taking it in and they're using it. And I didn't even have to say anything. And the kid goes and picks it up, and, oh yeah, I shouldn't drop it on the floor, or they throw it out. It's amazing how quickly the kids are, they just, I think they always wanted this. And now that it's there, they're loving it.
We hope that this time next year, we can provide you with absolute data that shows that this works. You know, less time in the principal's office, more time on task, more time on learning. But we have the Swiss data system, is it up yet?
Almost.
So, up and running, so we can provide concrete data to show that this works.
Be happy to answer any questions the board may have, but just in general, I couldn't be more proud to work with such a great group on our leadership team. And I want you to know, I'm incredibly proud of the whole staff at Mountain View. They have all worked really hard, they've worked together. And they have focused on positive messages, consistent discipline, consistent expectations. And the kids are really, really benefiting from this. The board may recall that Bartlett is a PBIS school, as is New Boston. So we've been able to use examples from our Bartlett students and our students from New Boston as exemplars. And they've shared, and there was even a singing of a bathroom song. I think Leslie might be willing to hump it. The kids have done a great job. I will say that having been at Mountain View very frequently, as I always am, I've never seen the bathrooms cleaner. I check the boys' rooms every time I'm in the building, and I have never seen those bathrooms so clean. The kids in the hallway, I've never seen their behavior any better. And it's really been an extremely positive initiative. Be happy to answer any questions.
Not a question but a comment. You know, I think what I'm hearing from you is telling me that those kids have known all along that they go to a good school. They just needed something to pull it all together. And to show everybody else that they go to a good school.
This really, pulling it all together is a great way of framing it. It's, it really has created a consistent, positive, structural organization that all staff have really bought into it. And the staff are happier, the kids are happier. And it's really telling when you're there, you can feel the difference. You really can.
Good.
It's clear, and I assume that you're representative of everybody else who's in the building. But your ownership and your commitment to it is the thing that will continue to make it successful. Your energy, your enthusiasm, as long as that stays and as long as the kids see that commitment and ownership and that exemplar, that's terrific. Congratulations, thanks for your effort.
And I'm really positive, I'm very confident it's going to, because I think everybody sees the success of it. And so, I mean, from the teachers to the administration to the custodians, you know, everybody owns PAWS pride. You know, so it's, it really, the success has bred success and feelings of success, isn't it? Maybe else have questions?
Thank you very much for taking time out of your evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any public comments? Seeing none. We'll move on to standing committee reports, human resources.
Yes. The biggest thing with the Human Resources Committee is that we did review our guidelines and expectations and realized human resources really isn't what we are. So we'd like to change our name to the Policy Review Committee, because that's what we do. There's also additional stuff in our charts that was just impossible. For instance, it said that we would review all policies yearly. So we have updated the language and what we really are. Whether or not we want to make another committee for the human resource portion of that, that can be something that the board decides whether they're gonna do. But the Policy Review Committee really hasn't been doing human resource stuff. It's been focused on policies, and we'd like to keep it that way, so...
Some of the things that sort of get pieced out anyway are collective bargaining, review of contracts. And these are all things that we develop committees for, individual committees for, to perform the work. And they don't really ever roll up into HR. And so as we looked at the series of tasks, as Lori went through them, she sort of, she teased out the things that get done on a repetitive basis. And it really does come down to, this is a policy function and really almost exclusively a policy function.
Yeah, it has been exclusively for, I want to say, at least eight years, that it's been focused on policies either we need to update them because of laws, because board members bring them up, because administration has noted some changes. So really, that's been our focus, and we can't even get through all of that within the year that we have, let alone supposedly get through everything plus contracts every year, which is what the original piece said. So, we want to be the Policy Review Committee now, and that have our focus. Also later on down the line, we do have some first reads that we're bringing up to you, which I can either do now or then, I don't know which one's easier.
Why don't we go ahead and do them now? Do we need to do anything as a board to adopt a change?
Yeah, what I would suggest is maybe once we have, everybody's done their homework and brought them to their meetings and updated their sheets, maybe we can bring them back as a packet. So that way, we can make sure we don't miss something. So if there's HR pieces that are not on there anymore, make sure either they're picked up or the board acknowledges you're not going, that they're tackled in a different way. So that way you can make sure you got everything in all of them, does that make sense?
Yeah.
You can bring them back as a packet.
Why don't you go ahead and go over the first reads now?
All right, so we have some first reads to bring to you. Megan went and looked at all of our food service policies and found out that they're very outdated. And the feds have quite a few laws that we have to follow anyway. So, based on what she reviewed, we're able to delete four policies, incorporate them into one main policy, which really states how we're going to follow the federal guidelines as they require us to. And the biggest change would be to the free and reduced price lunch policy. We do have some changes in there that Megan is suggesting. Right now, we have charging up to ten dollars. We'll notify when you only get ten. She, we'd like to change it to five. And also that when you go to charging for elementary and middle school, that you could only charge two meals, and it can only be meals. And at the high school, it can only be one meal. She plans on being here during second read, so she'll be able to better explain the thought process behind all of that. But if you want to read it, it'll be an EF-r, that's the regulation, so that's the biggest change. Pretty much with the policies, it's just changing it to reflect the language we have to follow anyway, based on the feds. The only other thing we have is just a review date on CB-r, which is the school superintendent duties. We were holding off on that one because pretty much that's taken right out of the Ed rules. And after talking to the Department of Ed, they don't plan on changing those rules for at least another year. So we're just reviewing and leaving them as is, and we'll review them again if the Department of Ed wants to change them.
Thank you. So they will come up next meeting?
To me.
Thank you. And I would, if you have any questions in the meantime, especially around the work that Megan has done, why don't you route them to Lori, and that way she can get them into Megan's hands so that we take advantage of, A, her being here, and that she knows what to expect. Planning and Communications.
PNC met tonight, and we spent a lot of time discussing how to move forward based on our board retreat and whatnot. Something that we specifically discussed was warrant, the warrant for next year, what we were gonna put on it, or what the board was gonna put on it. And what we'd like to do, and correct me if I don't have the quote correct, is we could discuss the board's position on bringing forward a warrant article for the elementary facilities, at least. And the idea behind that is that if that is going to be on the warrant for next year, we need to have that committee that we voted on last meeting, go ahead and start moving towards getting the information out to the public. But you don't want to do that if the board is not behind that and isn't committed to getting such an item on the warrant. Did I encapsulate?
Good job. I guess what we're looking for is feedback from the board as to, do you think you want to move forward with that warrant article in March? Because, you know, we're asking people to invest a lot of time and energy, and we don't want to find out a month and a half in that we're not gonna put it on the ballot. It's not gonna be a warrant article.
It is, it is, there is an awful lot of effort that goes into that kind of work. And if we are going to charge a committee with helping spread information to the public, we do need to, they need to know that they have our support and our commitment.
So, um, Dan. Not being part of the board, but actually being on the budget committee, I have some information, but I'm not sure if I have all of the information that I would like to have to make an informed decision on my part on whether I would like to go forward on that project or not. Some of the costs would be involved, whether or not the board is also thinking about the other warrant article. Is there a packet that we can pull out from somewhere?
Here's what I suggest we do. I think we probably have a fair amount of data that we can rely, at least in terms of making a decision to use, or why don't we put it on the agenda for our next meeting? Ultimately, what PNC really needs from us is, is the board committed to a decision so that then they can put together a plan. And while that, we may be looking at, I suspect, because we're early in things, we may be looking at this in isolation. And there may be other things that we either elect to do or elect not to do in terms of warrants between now and March. Really, the purpose of this is to look at where we're at and to make a decision, fortunately, in isolation on one thing. Because really, to get up to speed and to do the project justice in terms of providing people in the community with information, we really do need to start in fairly short order.
We do.
And this is not a binding thing.
Right.
Obviously, we're just trying to get a consensus. The majority of the board is saying, yeah, you know, we'd rather respond differently. If the board is saying, yeah, I think it is worth pursuing and we'll take a vote on it back, probably in November, whenever we do our vote on our warrant articles.
Ultimately, you're gonna, while you may make a decision that you're committed to advancing the project today, certainly there is the possibility that as you look at the dynamics of dealing with a project in January, that you may see things somewhat differently. This really is a decision to go forward with providing the community with information as opposed to an absolute decision to put it on, to put a warrant on the ballot for it. So there's a bit of a distinction there. But I think it's something that we can look out on the landscape now and make a thoughtful decision that we'll reflect on throughout the year.
And if there's any material online and you have something you can point me to online?
Yes, right on the webpage, there's a link on the left side for both the elementary building project and the track and theater, there's tons of information on both of those on the website.
And I probably have most of it and have looked at most of that. I guess if there were any like handouts that we had at the meeting here that shows a more detailed version of cost and, like a bond, if you went out for a bond, what the estimated payments would be, those kind of things.
I think that was on the website.
If you look on that, we had a bond hearing last year, so I think that all that documentation should be up there as well.
So, in an effort to be economical, let's put this on as an old business item for the next agenda. And, Dan, to the extent that there are questions that you have after you've had a chance to look at it, if we can get those to the superintendent's office in advance of our next meeting so that we're coming with information instead of trying to do things in real time. And that's true for everybody. So I'd encourage you to go out, refresh your memory, look at the information that exists, determine whether or not you believe there's other information that would be useful to you. But the decision that the board needs to make is whether or not to gear up, for PNC to gear up and to start working on an effort to dialogue with our community, talk to them about the project, answer questions, and prepare them for the fact that it may be on the ballot.
I have the website up, and it's not obvious. I have the website up and it's not obvious where it is.
It's on the left side. There's all those links on the left side. It's kind of towards the bottom.
Okay, bottom is, I'll go bottom up. MBMS study, area information, SAU nineteen events calendar, food service, district accountability, anti-bullying.
Did, did they come off?
I don't know.
I'll have to look at it. My webmaster over here, I thought maybe we took them off. I don't, yeah. We'll look, we'll get them back up because they shouldn't be off.
Okay.
I'll look. No, they were links. They were direct, direct links on that left side.
So, so if you would just shoot something out to everybody for a second. Thank you. Thank you, Jeff. Kurt Kilman, Education.
Um, we, our September tenth meeting was canceled because of a conflict of meetings. Um, our next meeting is scheduled for the twenty-sixth. And for anybody who'd like to attend this meeting, um, the work plan is program of studies at Goffstown High School, Dine Cine ELA revision, RTI math, CCS, behavior updates. Of all the schools, um, all the administrations of all the schools will attend and give their presentations. Um, it's very interesting because they start with what they're planning on doing and it kind of goes from kindergarten and then, um, elementary and it kind of, the links just go together as they, um, progress, um, for continuity. And so it's very interesting and very informative. And, uh, we are sending those agendas to the Boston and Dunbartons so that they will, uh, know of those meetings. The other thing is, is we have one course of study, um, that's a proposal. Um, I'm wondering if we can have a quorum, um, for October first, about twenty minutes before our regular school board meeting to talk about that so we can, um, bring it forth to the full board. So if you would email me and let me know if that would work for you, anybody on the board, um, on that committee, that would be.
Is this, is, November twenty-sixth is your next meeting?
November twenty-sixth is our next meeting.
But they're trying, there is a, a course proposal that needs to go before the committee because it has a budget impact. And so I think they're looking at the first to, to just do that course proposal so that we can get it in the budget.
What date is that?
Um, it's your Monday meeting.
October first. Um, I think it'll take about twenty minutes before, uh, we're meeting. There is another meeting going on at that time. Um, PNC is meeting at six, so I'm hoping maybe we can catch at the end of that. I don't think it'll be a long presentation at all.
We're wondering why it's not the second Monday of November.
In September?
No, in November.
Because I think the second Monday's a holiday. Yep, the second Monday's a holiday.
That would also be for, for A and F. We're going to do an all invoice review and we might talk it, we might rethink that. That'll be Hank.
Well.
So that's the question.
People on different committees, right?
Yeah, we all kind of overlap.
Sounds like everybody's going to be here.
Right, but if they're different meetings.
I know, all over the place.
Denise, I, I know you do this anyway. But I would ask that because, um, the next C and E meeting will be a soup to nuts. It's a great presentation. Um, it gives everybody a, a good chance to hear how things are coordinated, how the, how our buildings are working together to allow a student to work their way through our entire system. Um, if you would please include the public notice to both Dunbarton and New Boston so that to the extent that there are either board members or members of those communities who might like to attend that meeting.
That's a good idea. Yep, we're sending it to the board, but I think the community thinks it's a great idea. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Budget Committee report.
Um, Budget Committee meets again tomorrow. Um, but I have my notes from the last meeting, um, that they had June nineteenth before the summer break. And, um, Dan, last time you had asked if they had any specific guidance for the governing bodies and, um, on their June nineteenth meeting, they did in fact, uh, discuss any sort of suggestions or guidance that they may want to provide to the governing bodies as they present their budget. Um, went around the table. The end result was, and I've got this in quotes, "looking to be frugal, but we need to use our best judgment as to what is best for the town." And when I say we, that is the governing board. So what they're asking is, well, we need to keep an eye on the economy. Um, and, and I just forgot, what the Budget Committee wants to hear is what we need. Um, I've got, you know, just going down. The sentiment was that, you know, the Budget Committee wants to listen and give some priorities and, and understand what the different departments need before they actually get into their budget. Um, the other thing that they were asking, and this may come up at tomorrow's meeting, is as far as proceeding with the budgets and the presentation. Um, this may change, but as of their last meeting, they were looking to not do a Saturday meeting as we have done in the past, um, but rather have a joint meeting on one of their meeting nights, you know, where people would be available to answer any questions that they may have. So it's looking like that's where they're going to want to go with that.
So if, if it's possible to get those dates locked in because we're booking up.
Oh, yeah.
All the way to November at this point. So I just want to make sure whatever those dates are that the board, that we don't schedule negotiations or other things on those nights.
Right. It will, um, as I, my understanding is they will be on a Tuesday or Thursday rotation. Um, the regular regig committee meetings are the third Tuesday of the month. Um, but I will be sure tomorrow to, um, try to get that settled down for you. And that's it.
Area Planning Committee report. Our, our efforts are gone, ongoing. Um, I think that we're rapidly approaching the point where, um, the things that are left are largely, um, money issues, things that have dollars attached to them, um, that include really fundamentally the tuition and the rental charges. There are still some other things that that group is working on tweaking. Um, we are going to hold a, a community hearing forum next week in order to, um, give the community the opportunity to hear about where we find ourselves, the proposals that have been agreed to, the proposals that are on the table and to solicit feedback from the community. The, I, and, I, I hope I won't misstate myself. I believe that, um, Dunbarton's efforts with, um, Bo have reached sort of critical mass and they're going to be discussing their efforts to, um, bring a proposal forward for, uh, an area agreement, um, that could bind those two communities together. Um, so some of our conversation next week will address, uh, the things that we've come to understand about that particular opportunity, uh, for Dunbarton. Um, and how it impacts us and for that matter, how it impacts, um, the area agreement general. Uh, there is also, and this is an aside, um, there is also, uh, an area meeting to deal with the calculation of the rental charge, um, and that is coming up Wednesday. So we're meeting tomorrow night, uh, for area committee, Wednesday for, um, a discussion of the rental charge.
And, um, you want to just clarify who's on there? I know I volunteered, so you need, but I am, just remember who else had volunteered for that.
Suzanne Keith and then it was Diane or Philip, so you need to decide which one of you.
And that's going to be at seven o'clock at the SAU.
Seven o'clock at the SAU. I'll flip you for it. Or, or are you going to just volunteer? Because, because right now, between the two of us, we're out all three of the nights regardless of what we're doing.
Oh, we're all.
Okay.
Yeah.
And is there an ancillary side note to that about how the SAU will be? And a potential one-town, one-town?
I don't, I, until we get further information, um, I think that the statute addresses how the SAU would deal with, um, and I'm not positive of this, but, but the, uh, the reading of one ninety-four suggests that at least to the extent that somebody receives services, there is a methodology that sets out how the SAU is compensated for those services. I haven't seen anything thus far, but, but the research isn't done yet. Um, and, and we're going to go out and get, um, a little bit of advice from people who know far more about this than I. Um, the, I don't think, if, if the community of Dunbarton or New Boston, for that matter, were to leave the SAU but continue to have a need, or leave the area agreement, but continue to have a need for the SAU services, for their community schools, I believe that they could continue to do that and that the statute prescribes how the apportionment would be addressed. Yes?
I just have a question, um, for the area agreement.
Yes.
If Dunbarton were to leave, would that mean tuition prices would go up for students?
That's an interesting question. And, and if you'd like to come and join us on Monday, I promise to give you a much clearer answer about the dynamics of, of presence, absence, um, proposals, how, how things exist currently and a variety of different ways they could exist in the future with some specific numbers attached. Um, ultimately, as it, as it presently stands, um, all of the communities that either, um, that, that send students to the high school and the middle school, grades seven through twelve, basically pay, with some notable exceptions, a proportionate share of the financing for the education of the students at those institutions and for the support of the buildings. So if you remove any portion of those students, costs are going to go up. And they're going to go up for anybody, or for everybody. That's sort of the short answer. The nuts and bolts of that, I'll get you the specific details online, but please do come and ask lots of questions if you can. All right? Any other questions? Uh, Superintendent's report.
I haven't seen you guys since the first day of school, so I just want to report that. We had a really, really wonderful opening day of school this year, um, virtually no problems. We had a couple of buses in our bill, tied up our buses forever, um, with construction. And so we had some late buses, but other than that, um, I think the start of school year went really, really well. It was really positive. Like I said, really no, no problems or concerns. It was a, a very smooth opening. Um, just a reminder of meetings, which Philip just talked a little bit about. Um, tomorrow we have an area meeting, Wednesday is the joint school board meeting. You should have all received the documentation, um, from Dunbarton on what they're requesting. Um, Sarah Murdo from the Department of Ed will be the Department of Ed representative there. Um, so she will be representing as the state board. At the last board meeting, um, the board authorized us to go ahead with mosquito spraying for West Nile. They will be doing that on Thursday evening. So for any public listening, um, we need to be off Mountain View and the high school fields starting at five thirty. Um, they will be, will be posting. Um, we've got all our permits ready to go. So, um, we just can't be on the fields after five thirty. They'll be spraying sometime between, between us and Seany's and Barnard Park and all of the fields. Um, but we can be on them first thing in the morning. So it's really just that night that we have to be concerned. So that should take care of that. And, um, the total was around eleven hundred dollars. So it was far lower than what we had anticipated. So, um, and that was the, um, our spraying and we split the cost of the permit between everybody who was doing it. So the permit was really the, the most expensive thing and splitting it out, I think it was like three hundred dollars or something for the permit. We did have an issue with, um, our lift, for anybody, like the big lift that gets up to the high ceilings and the theater and the gyms, we move it around. It has died. Um, and so I've spoken with Jerry. I may come back to the board at next meeting with a proposal to purchase a new one. They're not cheap. They're about eighty-five hundred dollars. Um, but to rent one, it's four hundred dollars to rent them. So we've already rented them a couple of times. So, um, we use them consistently. Every time there's a light bulb out in the gym, we need them. So we're trying to package them all together, you know, things so that when we rent it, we can get lots done. But, you know, you get it here and then the next day something else breaks. Um, so it really has limited what we're able to do. Um, so the other pieces, at some point, if we rent it four times, we've paid for half of it. So in two years, it's not, it would be not unusual for us to rent it ten times this year. And so over a two-year period of time.
If we rented ten times, we paid for half of it.
Let me get that right. Um, so I may come back. I'm working with Jerry. He's looking at some pricing of them. So I may come back at your next meeting to potentially look at where we could purchase one because I think the cost savings of just purchasing it over continuing to rent it makes, may make more sense. Yeah, yeah.
Have you thought about the places that rent them? They usually sell them off after they're.
Yeah, so I, we'll, we'll explore the, you know, we'll explore all options. But, um, just know that that's out there and we are renting them at this point in time. Um, Senator DeLisandro was in all of our schools. He does an annual visit. He likes to just kind of come in, see what's going on in our school. So he, I know he walked through many classrooms. Um, today is Constitution Day, so it was kind of nice for him to be here. He started at Bartley with fourth grade this morning and talked about what the Constitution is. And so that was a nice, nice capture. Um, so he was around all day today. Um, we have scheduled the annual Halloween parade, October thirty-first. We're going to do it on the holiday. Um, and so know that's out there. I just applied for the permit for that. Kneecap is coming up, so all of our schools in, are in preparation mode. And over the next, um, six or eight weeks, um, everybody in three through eight and eleventh grade will get assessed. Um, so we're looking so forward to that. It's just an exciting time with a little sarcasm in that.
I caught that.
Yeah, I will also add, we were asked to pilot, um, Smarter Balance is the new assessment that is coming out. Um, that is the, going to be one of two national assessments that we will be taking. It will replace the kneecap. Um, it's all electronic. They're piloting some schools and we were, Goffstown High School was chosen as a pilot school. So it's a good opportunity. They're going to be just assessing one class. Um, but it's a good opportunity for us to kind of feel the test, see what it looks like, see how, you know, what the questions are, um, see how it's different from kneecap. So it kind of gives us a little heads up on what that looks like. So, um, that will be happening at the same time. We're going to try to do high school kneecap earlier and do that at the very end. So the, of the window, we have to do that. But, um, yeah, that's another opportunity for us.
Just, just because I'm a curmudgeon, how much instructional time do we lose?
Um, for the Smarter Balance, they're telling us sixty to ninety minutes. It's just one class. So it's only a class. Um, it's not the whole, like, tenth grade or eleventh grade. It's just a class. Um, they're trying to look for data across the nation to see where the test is falling. That's all I have right now.
So is it an evaluation of the test?
It's, it's, it's a combination of all, I think, what they're trying to.
It's an evaluation of the kneecap?
It's a pilot.
No, no, no. It's an evaluation of a new test.
Of the new test.
Oh.
We're just, we're switching over to the, the, our state joined twenty-something other states to create a consortium, the Smarter Balance Consortium. And so this is a pilot of that assessment, which we will be moving to in two years.
Oh, okay.
So kneecap will no longer exist. We'll be moving to this and it will actually become a spring assessment as opposed to a fall assessment, which will be interesting. But it's all online.
Is it going to be spring of twenty fourteen or fifteen?
Twenty fourteen, fifteen.
I'm dying to know, Hank. What did you do wrong? Because you always used to be at the top of the list. What?
Uh, we moved it so that it was kind of, we moved business and operations into its own category so that we can make sure we're capturing all of the pieces of it.
Privatized.
That's a naughty word to say.
We realign the agenda a tad bit.
Okay. So, so should I just make section three Hank time?
Yes.
Well, we're going to call, actually, we're going to call it Hank and Ray time.
Hank and Ray show.
Okay. Um, then we'll see the floor to you. Mr. Bora.
I'd like to bring forward the manifest, any amount of three million seventy-seven thousand, six hundred forty-seven dollars. Insisting of payroll, taxes and benefits, a total of one million, six hundred thirty thousand, fifty-eight dollars and nine cents. Payrolls were, two payrolls in this. Payroll of nine-four was three hundred seventy-seven thousand, six hundred eighty-four dollars. Payroll of nine-six was four. Payroll of 9-6 was $471,471,847. I have a couple of pages waiting for forgiveness. The taxes, 9-4 taxes, payroll taxes, $120,641. 9-6 payroll taxes, $151,760. Also included with the September health and dental, LGC Health Trust, $508,123. That brings us to a total of the $1,630. Special ed, this strictly transportation this time, $47,47,443 to provider, and $12,280 to Safeway. That's for July and August. The general expenses, $1,175,923. The big hitters were the bond payment, $741,500. The SAU assessment for September, $123,594. Valley communication systems, this was smart boards, projectors, and document cameras, The other big hitter, I guess you could say, would be the building roof at the Maple Avenue, Which was a total of $1,175,923,923. Which is a grand total of, for general expenses, $2,865,705.
I need a motion to approve as presented. Jenny, Suzanne seconded. Any questions? Seen none, all in favor of approving the manifest as presented?
Aye.
Propose abstentions for unanimous.
Okay, we've also got the DOE 25 and the MS 25 signings later. And we also have the 2011 and 12 unreserved fund balance summary. Do you want to do that, Ray?
Sure, sure.
While Ray's doing that, we do have a conflict now. If on October 1st, CNE, CNE meets, it's at least two members of the A&amp;F are on CNE, or will be there for that meeting. And we were going to do a grand epic.
Or invoice review.
You want to run a 15?
So can we change that, Ray?
You can, sure.
So unreserved fund balance.
Okay.
You got, you have it.
Yeah, I'll walk through the unreserved fund balance. The MS 25 and the DOE 25 documents are statements of actual costs incurred and actual revenues realized for the last school year. Put those together, and you recall from previous explanations, that those become the basis for the unreserved fund balance or the amount of money the school district would return to the town for tax relief. This year, the expenditure budget, or the general fund budget, was underspent by a total of $688,900. The spreadsheet that we've passed around identifies by location the major items contributing to that underspend. As an example, within the district lines, the district was able to realize $497,000 of the reserve that we had to create to account for expected increases in teacher retirement costs. Those did not come to be. We were able to recapture that money. Special education tuition, primarily special programs, such as the TransVogue program and one-on-one aid assignments that the Goffstown School District provides to New Boston and to Dunbarren, contributed to almost $290,000 worth of additional special education tuition revenue. And we were able to recognize savings of almost $50,000 in planned costs for sped transportation.
Ray, can I just, because I think you're just confusing it to revenues on the bottom. This would be because we developed all those in-house programs. If you remember, some of the monies, we said, oh, let's, can we use this money to provide a program?
That's correct.
The cost savings piece of that.
Any questions on what Stacy just said? Okay, then for Bartlett, in total expenditure budget at Bartlett, there was a savings of $107,000. Maple Avenue just about broke even, but did turn a savings in of $15,600. Mountain View Middle School had a budget variance of $135,000 in savings. And the high school actually came in $375,000 over budget. But again, those are primarily all of the projects that were addressed by the board back in the May and June timeframes. For revenue.
The savings you referenced at Bartlett Maple, was that also a result of our in-house programs?
For Bartlett, it was primarily savings in teacher salaries and benefits due to Title I funding moving to Bartlett.
I see, okay.
And for building services, Bartlett was able to save $29,000. We had the very mild winter. And we also had some very advantageous pricing for our oil contract this past year.
But I would say this fed salary, a lot of that would be either changes in teacher salaries. So when somebody left, we hired somebody either cheaper or more expensive and/or they took a family plan versus a single plan, or a single plan versus a family. So they're all kind of shift out. That's the cost savings at the end of the day.
Okay. Two questions for you.
Sure.
Well, actually, maybe three. We didn't just save on natural gas and electricity. We also saved on oil too, right?
Yes.
So that is, are these net?
These are net numbers, Jennifer, where these were the primary contributors to the, to the savings. But yes.
Because they're not broken out in Maple Ave or Glen Lake or Mountain View.
The major savings in those locations were the ones that we've identified.
Okay. So for example, Mountain View Middle School, $135,000. That is salaries. That, that's not salaries and oil savings.
It's, it's a net number. The $135,000 again is primarily salaries and benefits.
But it's made up on everything.
The oil costs, if you will, the electricity costs, if you will, savings there would have been used to offset budget increases or spending increases in other line items. So if you were to put all of them together, the major contributor to the budget underspend was the savings in the, in the salaries and benefits.
So for Mountain View, let me just make sure, $135,535 is the overall at the bottom line of Mountain View's is what was left. And the biggest contributor, although there were likely other contributors, was sped salaries and benefits.
Detailed cost reports are going to be circulated to all of you a little later on this week. You can take a look at actual year-end results and see exactly which line items were overspent and which provided the savings. That'll help probably with the analysis work that you're trying to do.
Yeah, I guess I just want titles and numbers to go together.
Those will be coming to you.
Can you refresh, I'm sorry, can you refresh my memory? The vocational education, the loss of state aid. Was that, it was, that was for the program at the Manchester School of Technology, right? The state used to help contribute towards tuition.
Yes.
I just want to make sure I'm correct. And they no longer at all, right? It wasn't just a reduction in the amount they did. They actually eliminated that entirely.
Which if you remember, the teacher retirement reserve was the same thing when the state said they were no longer going to pick up any retirement costs. We had to calculate that into our, our savings. We had to, we had to allocate that money somewhere. They ended up putting back in a portion of it, but not all of it.
Okay, moving on to just a quick look at revenues. We were able to realize $180,000 worth of tuition, extra tuition over forecast, again primarily from special education programs. Catastrophic aid came in $77,000 ahead of our projection. Medicaid reimbursement, our provider there did a great job in securing $134,000 more than we had anticipated at the time we put the forecast together. Other local revenue consists of building rentals, interest that we've earned on accounts or investments that the school district owns, book sales and the like. Ed jobs, you might all recall, provided $222,000 worth of additional revenue to the district. This was federal monies that had come in as part of the ERA activity. We were able to use that money to address teacher benefit costs.
Right, and that was this, that was over the two-year period, right? And that was what we used in the second year of that. Thank you.
Driver education, we did receive our last payment from the state, $4,500. That program too is now gone. And we did receive vocational transportation aid totaling almost $19,000 from the state. So those were the elements of the $672,000 over collection in revenue. Again, due to spending that we all addressed back in the May and June timeframe, we created an additional reserve for encumbrances of $400,000. The A&amp;F committee has asked the question on providing some detail, comparing these actual costs with the budgeted amounts that we had put forth on the MS 27, and then to provide further insight into the 430, or excuse me, the $400,000 reserve. We will have that all for you no later than your next meeting. We can go through it if you need it. So put those numbers together. That provides us with a bottom line available for return to the town for tax relief, A very rough calculation as to what that might mean on the tax rate for Goffstown is a 73 cent reduction.
Sounds like a newspaper article to me.
I think so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think so too.
Well, that number always seems large. It's half a percent of our budget.
Yeah.
Ray, can, just going through the cat aid and the Medicaid reimbursement, what goes into our forecasting for that? Why are those numbers different?
We, we have a student population that is, that we do receive reimbursement for those services for. The cat aid is typically a reimbursement for costs incurred a year earlier. Okay, so based upon what we know, we'll go forward with a number for our revenue forecast. Catastrophic aid, the estimate that we had put together for this past school year, we were all very, very concerned with the funding contraction from the state level. So we went in with a number that was conservative. Bottom line is, we were able to realize a bit more in actual reimbursement costs. But again, we also had a measure of conservatism in our original estimate.
And so for those who don't know what catastrophic aid is, the 32nd lesson, that is the aid we get reimbursed for any student who costs us more than three and a half times the state average. So at, from three and a half times the state average to 10 times the state average, we get reimbursed, I believe it's 80% of that cost, okay? But you don't get it till the year, the next year. So we're actually like right now in the budget projecting what we will get the following year for students this year. So it's hard to guess what students are going to totally cost you. So that's always a challenge. Anything over 10 times is reimbursed 100%. So obviously, the more expensive of a child you have, the more services you're providing, the higher reimbursement rate you're going to get. What has happened historically is the state has said that catastrophic aid is not entitlement reimbursement. And so therefore, that is an area that they have consistently reduced our reimbursement for. So I believe right now, Brian, I think we're getting about 60. Yes, I would say 66% of the 80% that we're supposed to get. So when, last year when we were budgeting this, they had talked about at some point like 30 or 40%. So we were very conservative on that, not really knowing where the reimbursement was going to come in. Medicaid reimbursement is solely based on students who are Medicaid eligible and the services that they receive. So again, we're predicting this year who might be Medicaid eligible and what services they might receive. So again, it's, we try to use historical data. We try to use information that we have. But any student can become Medicaid eligible or not become Medicaid eligible at any point during the year. So it's something that is very difficult to predict other than just using historical numbers about where we fall, so.
I will, the DOE and MS 25 may be signed tonight.
Yes, we'll put them out on the.
I have one calculation I'm going to throw at you guys because it's somewhat impressive. We look at our expenditure budget underspent at 688,900. Take the 40772 of the, what we voted in at the end of last year. The difference is 288,128. So you can look at it saying we underspent the appropriation side by 288,128. The balance is the revenue to bring it back to the 960, 681.
It's pretty darn close.
So the delta is one quarter of 1%.
Three, three? No, I think it's a little higher than that. At $35 million, 288 and 35 million?
No, actually, 960, because if you include the revenue.
Oh, if you want to go up to 960, then you're probably close to 3%. Because $35 million budget.
0027, but I could be off by 000027.
I wouldn't do 0027. I thought it was 027.
Not one quarter, not one quarter of 1%. Anything else for business operations slash financials?
That's it, thank you.
I'm going to turn it over to the superintendent for the MS study consultant.
Yep, so at the end of last year, last school year, we had lots of discussions around the study committee, the study that we were requesting for Mountain View. This board voted to authorize us to continue to move forward on that study. We did kind of the hybrid model. So we created a committee that met over the summer. I believe there were 26 people on that committee who met over two days. What they did was look at a framework through the New England League of Middle Schools. They looked at the data we have. They looked at the questions people had. And we put it into a framework. So that committee kind of came up with different, different areas for, and questions that they wanted this consultant to answer. If you look at the RFP that we then created based on.
Um, if you look at the RFP that we then created based on that information, um, there were, I believe, forty-nine questions that came out of that, looking at different areas. And so we developed our RFP around that, um, those study questions, um, looking to see, uh, you know, how would you go about getting answers to those questions, based on the data we had, those data you needed to gather, um, what experiences do you have as a consulting firm in doing a study like this, what is the timeframe you're looking at, what is the cost? Um, who are the, um, key players that would be involved in the study, and what are their experiences in both middle school, in providing, um, leadership in school improvement models, as well as, um, experiences in doing a study like this, and, and getting the data, we wanted it to be very data-driven. So we sent out the proposals, we received four, um, proposals back, um, from four different companies. They were, um, Learning Innovations at WestEd. Student-focused educational consulting, which is a company out of Bo. We received one from Ben Hampton, who's adjunct faculty at Manchester Community College, and we received a proposal from Suresk. So we reviewed the proposals, last week they were due, we reviewed the proposals, we did an entire rubric on them to analyze them based on the outline that was in the RFP. Um, we are bringing forward, um, to the board, we're recommending we move forward with Learning Innovations at WestEd as the consultant, as the firm to do this, they have extensive, um, background and experiences in doing this exact same work, they are a national corporation, so they bring um, a national perspective, but also local, regional, um, representatives to do the study, we've met with them through different times periods, um, when we originally did this. I am, um, extremely confident in their skills and their abilities in doing this work, um, this is what they do, this, the, WestEd is a huge corporation, they do a lot of different things, the Learning Innovations portion of them is really, they do, this is what they do, they do studies, they do work with schools, they look at school improvement, they provide the leadership and direction, and so I'm confident that they will be able to move us forward, if the board approves this. I will be honest, I was a little surprised at the price, because I think that, um, my anticipation was that the price was going to go down, except that the study, the phase one of the study committee expanded the scope beyond what my original scope was, um, because the original, my original, if you look, remember the, um, information I gave you had a couple of guiding questions, when we added and got to forty-nine questions, um, it was more significant work for them to do, although I, I honestly believe it's important work for them to do, um, if you've looked at the RFP or this information online, I think the questions will answer all the, uh, it will get us to where we need to be, it will answer all of the questions that have been public, um, that have been out there, and it will help guide us and direct us where we need to go, um, we've got off to a great start, I think things are moving in the right direction, and this will really help us focus and refine where we, where we need to be and where we need to go, I think it will provide real information based on data and fact, um, so would that be, um, proposal, the cost for the entire study, um, including all related services for onsite and offsite data collection, um, which they're involving, um, interviewing teachers, doing surveys, having forums with both students and parents from all the communities, um, doing all of the research, getting all of the data, because again, our goal of this was make it data and research-based. So when we talk about teacher turnover, well, what does, what do, what do the national trends say about teacher turnover, what's a number that would look good? So really using research, so the time it takes to research all of those pieces, um, prepare and submit, um, the final report to us, their timeline worked within what we were doing, and, um, they're looking at giving us a report in February, um, they have a final report in March, which I'm gonna ask them to back that up to February, because I think it's important that we have a final document um, before election time, um, one for this board, but also to move things along, but also for your two sending communities to have that information about where we need to go and what we're committed to be, to doing at that time period. Um, so I'm bringing forward the proposal from WestEd, um, their cost, their budget cost proposed is thirty-five thousand, five hundred and eighty-one dollars. The next question I'm guessing people will ask is where will that money come from, um, I have worked with Carol, um, Hillman's R H R director, and we have about two hun, a little over two hundred thousand dollars in savings in our staffing lines between salary and budget, so again, when the day shifts down, new staff that we've hired changes in health insurance plans, so somebody who was budgeted at a family plan at, you know, sixteen thousand dollars, who took a family plan at nine, and so all of that, when it filters down, we have about two hundred thousand dollars in savings um, in those lines, so my proposal would be to take the money from those lines to pay for this.
What's the proposed cost again, I'm sorry?
Thirty-five, five eighty-one.
Five eighty-one?
Yeah.
Do it for thirty-five thousand flat.
Is there a motion on it?
Make a motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent for our, um, study.
Is there a second?
Sure.
Suzanne seconds. Questions, concerns, discussions, Lori?
Would I be able to get the, the matrices that were used to pick? The one that you picked?
I need to research that, that was a question that came up, whether those were public documents or not, and I need to research that, because technically then people would be, um, because you would then see where we ranked them all, and I'm not sure that the other consulting firms would be very happy about having that information public, so I don't want to say yes or no, um, let me research where that goes.
Okay, because, yeah, especially when we're, we're dealing with the money, I'm just kind of interested in the cost versus, um, value added that we would be getting in order to be able to.
I, I can tell you that WestEd came out significantly higher in their skills and abilities to perform.
So, grade, grade, they came out significantly.
Grade, right.
I just wanted to make sure I understood what you were saying.
When we looked at all of the, when we looked at the qualifications, when we looked at the background of the companies, the studies that they have done before around kind of similar topics around working with middle schools, um, WestEd, um, has significant experience in doing all of that.
My recollection is, and, and please tell me if I'm wrong, anybody at the table, but this is actually at the, not at the high end of the range that we anticipated, sort of soup to nuts, but we've digested a piece of it.
Yes, and I will tell you, this was not the highest cost proposal either. There was one other cost proposal that was higher than this.
Do you have a list of what all the costs were? That, that should be public enough for us.
Um, I have this proposal, I had one at forty thousand dollars. There was one that was a dollar, and there was one that was, that was twenty-one thousand. Twenty-seven thousand, one hundred.
Is this a fixed cost?
Yes, for everything.
I, I think maybe the, the point that we need to take out of this is not the dollars, because we were looking initially, we had quoted us like twenty to sixty, so we're like right smack in the middle, or on the lower end of that, and if you're finding that their qualifications are so much higher than the others, I mean, it's, it seems like, kind of like a smart thing to do, to go with people that have the qualifications, so that we get the study that we're really looking for. Regardless of what the others' charges were.
Right, and this was not a.
For the skills.
When we sent out the RFP, it was not a low bid, um, because our goal was to really look at who had the qualifications and the experiences to do and get the information of what we needed.
And, and to, to back up, and I'm gonna repeat probably some of the things that you've already said, when we were talking about the people who were potentially competing to perform the work for us, we talked about a variety of characteristics and qualifications, um, that would have a value to our process. So, as, as we look at the range of possible outcomes, in terms of the bid, we have a low of one dollar, and then we have three which are rel, in relative terms closely grouped together, um, and are probably fairly reflective of the things that distinguish the providers from each other, in terms of, um, capacity, experience, view, um, whether they are local or national, in terms of scope, and ability and needs of the study.
And if you look at the RFP, there were, I think, eight guiding questions that we asked them to answer, and that was what the rubric was based on, how they answered those questions and the skill level that they bring to the table, for example, have they ever done a, a study before like this?
One of the, uh, things that I get to bring to the table, is something that I get to do in my day job, is to evaluate, look at some RFPs in understanding, and then with the state laws that surround all of this. At the state level, there is actually an RSA that indicates if you put out an RFP for a bid, and it's not low bid, you actually design in the RFP the scenario for which you are going to score. Did we get to do that? I'm just trying to get, because unfortunately for me, I did not read the RFP, so I'm coming from, um, a position of, of ignorance. So, we didn't tell them how we were gonna score.
Yeah, we said we were, it was, it was very clear it was not a low bid, but it was based on experiences.
Experience and different things, and so we did some scoring.
Well, the, the outline of the RFP clearly said we were looking for, do you have experiences in doing this, and tell us what, and provide us with copies of those reports, if you have them.
Okay.
What is your experiences working with the New England League of Middle Schools framework, and tell us how you've applied that, tell us about your leadership experience, so it was all of those key points where it was pretty clear to me that, when you look at that, that that's what we would be looking for. Because those were all, is what the RFP was spelled out to be.
I can guess that the, the dollar was likely Ben Hampton.
Yes.
And the, what I don't know is the difference between the forty K and the twenty-seven.
Thirteen.
Yeah.
Very good with math, who submitted the forty K one?
Yeah, I'm a little wary about talking about that in public, because it's a bid, it's not a public bid.
It's public information, why is it not public information, I guess that's my question. Once you, you issue an RFP, see, again, I'm coming from the state level, when an RFP is opened, it's opened in public.
If he was very clear that it was not a public bid opening.
And so, if you believe it's not public, what I would ask is if you can help me out, coming to the next meeting, and let me know what we're relying on to make it not public. That is my request.
Yeah, bids we've put out before, Dan, and I, I don't want to, you know, well, we, we don't announce anything until the actual contract has been awarded. And the reason for that is, there's always the possibility of multiple negotiations, and I sense that's probably, you have ongoing discussions with these respondents here, and until the time the contract is actually announced and awarded, everything is not public information.
That works for me.
Is that something that can be discussed, um, pursuant to ninety-one A? As something that's.
No, because it has not gone to the public, the board has not seen the proposal, so it's not a public document at this point.
No, that's one, is it something that can be discussed in non-public, I don't, I can't remember.
Yes, I believe in non-public, because it's contract awarded, so it would be negotiating a contract, and I believe that.
That falls under. That would be ninety-one A.
Yep.
I'd like to be able to discuss it further, so that I could vote for it, if people want to vote for it now, I'll probably just abstain, because I don't have that further information.
Is there a?
Move the table to non-public.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
I can, Julie opposed.
Yep. Uh, we have already discussed the joint area review committee. New business, uh, we've covered new REA policies. And we've also discussed, uh, actually, we haven't, so let's go back up, um, Dunbarton School Board letter regarding expiration of AREA.
So we, I forwarded you, um, Dunbarton had sent to the Goffstown School Board, and I forwarded it to you, a letter, um, indicating kind of their stance on when the area agreement expires, um, and I think you hopefully have all read the letter.
Yes, and, and I have, um, on, on your behalf, unless you tell me, I don't need to do this, have inquired, um, about whether of the position that has been articulated is supportable.
Can I ask, this is definitely negotiation, since it should be done in non-public?
Well, the, the, the letter itself is public, I don't.
Right, but I'm saying our discussion of it, I think should be in non-public.
Okay.
Negotiation, oh, negotiations for AREA is not, not in public.
In other words, we're talking about what's gonna be our strategy, what, you know.
It's not non-public.
Actually, yeah, at, at, at this juncture, um, I don't know that it's a, it's a, on this particular issue.
Yeah.
Dunbarton's letter referenced a, a couple of things that they have taken, that that community has taken a position on, with regard to either, um, their future association with Bo and discontinuing the association with, uh, Goffstown, and I believe that, um, for the benefit of our community, we need to do our due diligence on those positions.
Yeah, I don't agree with some of their analysis.
Well, I, I understand, but, but let's find out and get some specific feedback on the position that they've taken, um, to determine whether or not it's supportable.
I definitely think you should be consulting on that behalf of the board. Do we know if they've reached this?
No, there's no debate to answer what they're doing.
I was gonna say, yeah, do we know if, if this is something that they've read themselves and decided, well, this is how we think it is.
Yes.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
So there's, there is no professional input.
Yes, they have professional input from their own attorney.
Oh, okay.
But the law is not black and white, you know?
That doesn't mean that our attorney couldn't have a different.
Well, again, um, what we're looking for is some guidance, I can't imagine that this is actually the first time that this sort of thing has happened in, in the four corners of New Hampshire, and I suspect that there's something out there that will offer us guidance on it. It, it may be something that never, ever needs to be addressed, uh, it may be, um, but I think we, we would not have done the service that we've been asked to do if we didn't at least have a good idea of what the answers might be.
So are you looking for a motion?
Um, I don't, I don't.
I don't think you need a motion.
I don't believe I need a motion, no. Um, but to keep everybody in the loop, um, and I believe you've all seen a copy of the correspondence, so.
That is not something that's gonna come into our pure view as the current area.
It is not, it's a separate issue.
Completely.
Yep.
It, it certainly, it certainly would inform our conversation about the future, whatever that future looks like, um, whether it's, it's that it needs to be properly reflected in a future document, or addressed because of the consequences of, of the, uh, end of the current agreement. Nurse substitute pay.
At the, actually, the last couple of board meetings, we've had conversations around substitute pay for nurses and, um, the difficulty we were having in getting nurses, and so we called kind of the local school districts to ask them what they pay their nurse substitutes, um, figuring, as opposed to statewide, who are the people we're directly competing with, um, and I believe, did this just was attached? The nurse's substitute pay?
Yes.
So we, I sent out a pro, proposal to the board, um, I have copies if somebody would like them, um, send them around, that's okay, I made copies just in case. So in general, yes, we currently pay sixty-five or seventy-five dollars a day, we pay seventy-five for an RN, uh, we pay sixty-five if there's something else, um, and so, in general, we're very far below other local areas, with the exception of John Stark, who also pays sixty-five dollars, but in general, they're paying between a hundred and twenty and a hundred and thirty-five dollars a day. So, um, we're clearly not competing for nurse substitutes, um, and so I am requesting or proposing that we, um, move to a daily rate of a hundred and twenty-five dollars a day for a nurse substitute only, not for a teacher substitute, but just for a nurse substitute, that should allow us to be. That should allow us to be competitive and provide hopefully a more stable base of nurse substitutes. Um, I don't think it will, we don't hire nurse substitutes. We, one of the reasons, if you remember, of us moving to two nurses was that it also provides us some flexibility, that if a nurse was out, we had some extra nurses in the, not, we don't have extra nurses, but we have the ability to move a nurse if we needed to, to another school. So we anticipate needing less nurses to start with, um, but it's, it's not a significant increase that I believe the budget can withstand that, um, that the substitute line can withstand the increase for just nurses, um, since it's a small number.
How is it work so far with the additional nurses in order to meet the need?
It has worked absolutely wonderful. Um, we haven't actually, I don't believe, have had any nurses, you have the, I don't, the substitute report, somebody has it. I don't know if there is any nurses that have been out, um, but we have a, a nice new staff. The complement, I, I think, has worked really, really well, having all nurses. Um, I think they're working together, they're working really well, um, and I, I think it will be a positive for us.
Is that the correspondence folder over there?
Oh, yes.
What's the daily hours for a nurse in and out?
It's regular school day, just the, like, regular substitute, so depending on the school.
How about the high school?
Seven thirty-five to two forty-five, whatever the regular workday is.
And just, just willy-nilly, just increasing this to one twenty-five, you don't run afoul of any contract or?
No, I, I did send a letter to Ginny Sinclair, the president, just to let her know that I was bringing it forward to the board. I did not hear anything of that, it was an issue, but, um, substitute pay is not part of the teacher's contract, so.
Oh, okay.
It's not negotiable, it's not a negotiated item.
You got something as a part of your contract. No move, that we, that we accept the superintendent's re- recommendation and go to one twenty-five a day for nurse substitutes.
Thank you, Suzanne. Hank seconds. Any discussion?
If we divide it out, that's somewhere around roughly eighteen bucks an hour.
It's cheaper in yours.
Which, when you're making life and death decisions for students at school, is ridiculous, but.
It's, uh.
Without any benefits.
All in favor of the motion as presented?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Were unanimous?
Thank you, with the squeas though.
For the selectmen.
Um, I received an email from Susan Russo asking, um, that the board of selectmen would like to schedule a special meeting with the school board to look at capital items for the two thousand and thirteen budget. I think they want to have just an open dialogue about what's on there, maybe some strategy or planning to have a, make this happen. And so they are looking for a date when you are available to meet in September, although we're kind of coming to the end of September, they said. She noted that selectmen Monday night meetings are all booked with budget presentation, so a different night of the week would be best for them.
Can, can we, we would still need to post it, but we can do this as a work session?
We can do the joint meeting, I think you'd have to do it as.
Yeah, it would be a joint meeting between the two boards. Or it could be, well, it could be a, a, a selectmen's meeting that you're invited to. Or it could be a board meeting that selectmen are invited to.
I would probably just call it a joint meeting.
So I guess I would be, does the board want you meet with them and then?
I don't know if the whole board needs to meet with them, but.
And, and to be per- to be perfectly honest, um, it's, right now, um, it's pretty broad. Could we get, I'd really like some more specific detail. I mean, you know, we're, we're happy to try to set a date. I think there is potentially some value to it. But I'd like to have an agenda, I mean.
I think the agenda is CIP. That was the agenda.
Let me, let me give you some conjecture.
I would, I would, having, having had a couple of conversations, um, is it CIP for next year? Is it CIP long-term? Is there a specific proposal that we could digest and/or respond to before we sit down at the table? Because, given, um, the last all-boards meeting, um, and the couple of meetings that I've sat in on, um, I think that preparation and knowledge is of value, more than willing to offer feedback in order to proceed. But I, I have, my gut instinct is, is that we need to know what we're there to talk about. We need to exchange some of this stuff before we sit down at the table, um, and start kicking things around.
Okay.
So.
I saw the meeting where they discussed it.
Okay.
Yeah, what they want is to look at, I think the fire department wants a three million dollar bond for work on the fire stations. And schools want X number of dollars to, they want us all to get together and see if we can find a way where we can manage either jointly or separately, getting what we need in a, in a fashion that we're working with.
I, I agree, and, and here's what I, here's what I've talked with, um, Peter about. Peter Georgantis in his role on the budget committee, because he also has a similar interest in managing CIP as a member of the community.
He is not again?
And, um, uh, Scott has participated in this very kind of discussion. And I think that in order to effectively do this, um, somebody is in charge of CIP. Without that person here performing that function, I think we're sort of on the sidelines because really the, the push here is, is, is if the community wants to spend a certain amount every year in terms of capital, that, that needs to be agreed upon, and it's not just the selectmen and the school board. There are all kinds of entities in town.
When you say someone's in charge of CIP, I don't understand.
Tim, what's?
Well, he's, he's the chair of CIP.
He's the chair of CIP.
Which reports to the planning board, which in turn, turn and gives it all to the board of selectmen.
Okay.
You're gonna wind up with this.
Basically gives it to the budget committee.
Yeah.
I mean, I mean ultimately, if we're gonna do something collaborative, really, let's do it collaboratively. But let's get an idea of, of what our target is. Because right now, we're going into a meeting where, um, we don't necessarily have any clear objectives other than a discussion, and we don't really know, other than a loosely formed conversation, what that agenda looks like. And I'm not sure that we do the schools or the community a service by not having some goals around that meeting.
There is an agenda because they have.
I think they're always thinking it.
They have an agenda.
The email was, the email specifically said to discuss the capital items in the two thousand and thirteen budget.
I think they're over, so.
I think they're just looking to talk about next year and the year after, maybe.
It is similar to what, um, in my past role on the budget committee, what, what I had heard from the selectmen in, in that they felt there was a competition going on for the rare dollars.
David, David Pierce stood up in the all-boards meeting and said the selectmen are competing against the schools, which, which really doesn't make a lot of sense, but Dan, I think you're right to your point.
That's their feeling, and I think they want, and from what the email indicated, they wanted to see if, where the school board was feeling, but it might be premature because we haven't discussed where we're going.
And the fact of the matter is, like, last year, we put our warrant articles on to see what the voters wanted, whether they wanted this or whether they wanted that. And I think that's really where it comes down to, not who's going to decide, you know, the town gets this much, we get this much. I think it's more putting it out there and letting the voters decide.
Well, I, I think, I think we benefit as a community, and, and I think part of the reason that people elect people to do this work is so that if we come forward with a plan that considers all of our capital needs, whether it's for a year or two years or five years, um, that, that as a community, we're better off. And, and that's the discussion that I tried to have at the all-boards meeting. So if, if this gives us the opportunity to have that conversation, it's all good. But part of it is, is having an understanding of the things that might be on warrant articles. Um, and not just for us, but also for other entities of the community, you know? Is, do we need a trash truck? Do we need a fire engine? Do we need police cruisers? What, what is the whole landscape look like, um, not just a couple of things?
That's what CIP's, that's GIP, that's CIP's directive to do that.
Um, and my point that, that, um, a CIP committee makes a valuable contribution to this discussion, regardless of whether or not they roll up to the selectmen or, or who they roll up to. Any of it, um, I, I'm in favor of it, I've been in favor of it for a long time. But I think the important thing is, is that we need to understand, um, what things we're gonna be talking about for what period of time, um, and, and part of it is believing that we understand what the district's needs are, you know? What things might we want to bond? What things can we do out of operating expenses? Is the elementary school project the number one project, and, and do we put other things aside until that point? So I think we can have a, we can have a general discussion that looks at the total capital that we might want to as a community invest in, but I'm not sure that we can go much further than that.
Well, to answer the question directly, I don't have much or any available time in September to participate. It would, something else would have to give first, from what's already scheduled.
Okay.
I think, personally, I think maybe we should try to do right after our first meeting in October. I think after that first meeting in October, we're gonna have a better idea of what we may want to go for with warrant articles. So you know?
Could, could, and, and all of our, we all meet on Mondays.
Yep.
So is it, is it something where we can try to either?
We can't be with them on Mondays, they said they're booked for budget.
For September.
Oh, for September.
Yeah, they'll be done.
It's only a couple.
So try to meet with them on?
I mean, October one with everything else.
Yeah. October one's not a good night.
Yeah, October one is not a good night.
No.
No, because you also have Honeywell coming to do a presentation.
Oh, God.
Well, I mean.
They said that we'd look at other nights.
Other smokes. Holidays is October eighth.
You didn't schedule anything until the seventeenth, right?
I'll have to talk to you about that a few days.
Okay.
No, my Tuesdays are okay.
Yeah, I mean, Tuesday the second, I can do no problem.
How about Tuesday the second?
Tuesday the second?
I mean, it's.
I, there's, you have nothing, well, not, as far as I know, you have nothing on your calendar on that night. I think I have them all on my calendar.
Okay.
Um, actually, I know you don't, because we actually talked about that as a potential date, so.
Yeah. I, what time do you think you fill from offering to them?
Six, six thirty?
They said, they said at six.
No, that's their Monday meeting.
That's their Monday.
I mean, I have, I, I, October second, I'd be working out of the house in the afternoon, so I, I'd be very flexible to start.
Earlier would be better for me.
How, when you say earlier?
Earlier than sev- six is fine.
Yeah, six, six, six thirty.
Want to try six o'clock on that Tuesday?
Yeah.
Ask them if they're be able to that. Our house, their house?
Yeah, I mean, if you're open, I'll call Sue and we'll figure out the logistics.
Okay.
I mean, and I'll get back to you.
I mean, it's, it's a little less cramped in here.
Yeah. Why don't we say, ask, we do it here?
Yeah.
Because we got more tables and chairs where we can make a big oval, so it'd be a lot more comfortable.
Okay, I'll con- I'll just confirm with them, and then I'll ask them also to provide us maybe a more detailed kind of thoughts on what, what they'd like to discuss at that meeting?
Yeah, I, I mean, even if it's only sort of timeline, things that, things that exist in their plan over that timeline. Without absolutely committing to anything that are priorities. All right, we've already done, uh.
Three different things.
First week. Area public forum, planning and discussion.
Yep, this is, that's next Monday, so it is, we can talk later, but I didn't know if there was anything that any of the board members wanted to plan or bring or.
Are you expecting the full board there?
I, if the full board can be there, I think it's a, it's a public hearing, it's a public forum.
Sorry, I missed.
Oh, love's my idea.
If, if you can be there, great.
You already wrote your calendar, so.
Yeah, yeah, it's in there.
If, if, if only to ask questions. Again, what?
I don't think it's on last two lines, most people really come up with some significant questions.
Well, and, and hopefully there will be some questions, um, but I, I mean, I even know there are questions amongst us.
Do you please send seven o'clock, next Monday?
Oh, yeah, Monday, Sunday, twenty-fourth to seven.
Yes. But that's the area.
You have the, the public period. The public. Yeah, the question and answer period.
Um, and, and.
Seven o'clock?
Where?
Here, this room.
Could we send a, like, a notice or an invitation to the budget committee? Because really, at some level, um, there are people in, in that group who may also have questions because there really is very much a numbers aspect to this.
Diane gonna be able to be there tomorrow night, you can?
Yep, and it will go, it's gonna be in all the notices, and I believe that I sent the press release to the paper, and I believe Kathy is going to do something for that this week as well.
All right, co-curricular nominations?
Yep, and I apologize, I had made copies of them, and I clearly did not bring them because they're not in my pile. Um, so I'm going to read them to you, which is gonna be a little dry, but. Um, okay, so we'll start with, I have one co-curricular resignation. This was actually somebody who I nominated over the summer, we gave a contract to, confirmed it at your last board meeting, and then resigned, um, because he's actually not staying in the area. So it's, um, Jose Felipe Maya, who we had nominated for boys' B soccer at Mountain View. So I just need the board to accept his resignation.
Can move.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Were unanimous?
I have, um, three co-curricular nominations for sports. I have Mike Garrity for boys' B soccer, um, at Mountain View. Brett Wilcox, who will be a new coach, um, who is a new employee of ours. He's doing, um, the in-school suspension program at the middle school, as well as the PE position at Bartlett. Um, he is going to do freshman volleyball at the high school. Paul Roy is returning ice hockey at the high school.
I need a motion to approve? Second?
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Were unanimous?
They will bring forward, these are co-curricular, non-sports, all high school for this year. Activities director, Josh Dorosha. Advisor for ninth grade is Jennifer Boishman and Megan Thoreau. Grade ten advisor, Erica Williams and Jess Brown. Grade eleven, Eric Romaine and Sarah Tower. Grade twelve, Lees Mayhew and Barb Jones. For band, Doug McKernan, chorus, Josh Dorosha. Drama is going to be split by three people. Kurt McDermott at fifty percent, Tina Philabod at twenty-five, and Doug McKernan at twenty-five. Lead teacher for English, Maureen Brown. For math, Jess Brown, for science. Diana Thomas for social studies, Tim Micho. For marine biology, Diana Thomas. For National Honor Society, Abby Andrew. For newspaper, John Moran, Pierre Outreach, John Webb, and Kurt McDermott. For pet band, Doug McKernan. For strength and conditioning, Kevin Plouffe. For student council, Erin McKinnon and Ryan Fitzpatrick. And for yearbook, um, Seal Pareda and Lees Mayhew. I apologize for reading those, I had to give them to you, but I left a copy, so.
Inquiries.
Inquiry, um, one, my ignorance doesn't allow me to know what they all do and what their stipend is.
It's all in the contract, it's all outlined in your master agreement.
Okay, was it like twenty-five bucks or?
No.
No, it's a annual salary, depending on, they're, they vary.
Depends on how much time they put in.
Give me a, give me a, a middle number.
There is.
You can't, it's just too many.
Yeah, that's, here, because here's, somebody took an enormous amount of time about seven or eight years ago, a group of people, to sit down and look at the roles and the functions that many of these. to sit down and look at the roles and the functions that many of these.
Advisors.
You got a contract?
Advisors performed, yeah. And developed a scheme that sought to compensate them based upon what they performed.
There's the list right there, Dan.
And that's kind of like what you guys are doing right now, whoever's on that subcommittee?
Actually, I, I will tell you that that, that is probably an area that we will continue to look at and discuss. Because after the amount of time, it, it may very well get some revision.
Are there, some of these on this list, coaches as well, not just advisors? Because I heard the word advisors, and I heard band.
Coach, there's sports and non-sports, so typically your sports are coaches and your others are advisors. Your non-sports are advisors.
It depends upon how much.
But it's all spelled out in there.
Thank you. And they're chosen through a, a process?
They apply for it. Typically, it's if you've done it before, we continue to keep that consistency. But they apply for, through the principal? Do we have a motion?
Move to approve?
Yes. We have a, a.
Philip, I would like to recuse myself.
Huh?
I'd like to recuse myself.
Okay. Suzanne motion, she's seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention. One abstention, Jenny, right?
Yes, and I just have a few just notifications. We have, what, five interns from Sanes working at Bartlett, with some that are just doing observations, kind of, you know, helping out in the classroom. Haley Leclair, Stephanie Rice, Sarah Judge, Molly Frost, and Emily Burns will all be working at Bartlett. And just to notify you, we have one teacher who's on a leave of absence. Joanne Berry is on a leave of absence until February. She's a fifth grade teacher at Mountain View, so we have a long-term sub in that role right now. And that's all I have.
Yeah, we don't need a motion.
No, just notified you.
Or any other business that may legally come before the board? Seeing none, I would accept a motion regarding the public session, pursuant to RSA ninety-one A, polling two-two.
And who's got the letter?
I think it's C.
Contract negotiation?
And, and legal man.
Ninety-one A three.
We lead our attorney for a legal matter. Someone's contract.
What?
Discussions.
Could be a discussion of matters that are likely to adversely affect the reputation of a person.
Yeah.
Oh, is it a contract?
Consideration or negotiations of pending legal claims or litigation. Considering the acquisition, sale, or lease of real or personal property, hiring of a public employee. Yeah, I'm surprised, I thought there was something, I mean, because if you're negotiating.
Something about a contract. It's an acquisition, but it's not a piece of property.
Sale or lease of real or personal property.
Did we find a letter yet?
I mean, I think three, fif, I mean, if the board is comfortable with three. Discussions of matters that are likely to adversely affect the reputation of a person, other than a member of the school board. I mean, you're certainly talking about why you chose a company over another company.
Yeah, sounds appropriate.
That you wouldn't want to discuss in public.
Good night.
We didn't take a vote yet.
It's okay, I'm, well, the next vote would be adjourned if we don't go into non-public.
Right.
That's what I can tell.
But we have a motion and a second on the floor, right?
We have something table.
Yes, no.
We have to find the RSA reference.
She just, I think she just came up with this.
Yeah, we would have to come back, we have to come back into public, to at least even adjourn the meeting, affirm your vote.
And when we find out the vote?
I'm not sure I'm comfortable with that one.
We will have to come back into public.
He's on very well, he lives in Connecticut now, not just a Connecticut.
Sorry, I couldn't tell you.
I gotta find an R. Ninety-one A?
And how?
Are we in, are we gonna?
Dan, did you want to see ninety-one A?
Yeah, I'm looking at.
What you read, I didn't hear anything. And I have a very large packet from the Attorney General's office.
That off?
That discusses that whole parameters, and it gives examples of those.
Much a wonder.
I have it with me tonight. But I'm gonna put on my list to look at, to make sure that we're good to go.
Well, here, this is the list, based on law, that's why you would go into non-public.
Is that if we don't do this correctly, and somebody wants to get the minutes, they're gonna get a minute.
Now, let me look at the question again, and you're correct if you make a mistake, Mar.
Why don't we just forget it, then?
So who's researching which one we should be under right now?
So are we saying?
Okay, I will read them to you, and this board can determine whether you believe it fits under. The six grounds upon which you may enter non-public. Dismissal, promotion, compensation, or disciplining of any public employee unless that employee has a right to an open meeting and request the meeting be open. Two, hiring of a public employee. Three, discussion of matters that are likely to adversely affect the reputation of a person, other than a member of the school board. Four, consideration of the acquisition, sale, or lease of real or personal property. Five, consideration or negotiation of pending legal claims or litigation. And six, consideration of matters relating to the preparation and carrying out of emergency functions.
I think the one about the reputation would be the correct one for us. Because I don't think these companies necessarily would like to have this discussion made public.
Here is the terminology when we want to talk about our negotiations with the teachers.
It's the hiring of public employee.
Okay.
So, we're trying to decide whether non-public is appropriate to discuss.
We're trying to decide which one of them would be.
Laurie's.
Reasons and the, and, and the price.
Yeah, the same language.
Well, before, when I've been on.
It's slightly different, it's more legalese, but.
Okay, just wanna make sure, they didn't change it, or something, what I have.
Go ahead, Suzanne.
When I ran into this before, it was in the context of, somebody submits a bid, you know, we set out forty-nine questions, you said. They came back with supposedly forty-nine responses and a price to do whatever those forty-nine questions want them to do. So if yours, your bid is forty thousand, and his bid is twenty thousand, and I make that public, you're giving each of them access to the other, the other company's method of operation.
Which is an adverse.
Which is not supposed to do.
Right.
Right.
Well, that's.
That's part of the process.
Where I'm having a problem, where the, my day job tells me you do that all the time. That's what happens, all the time, that, it becomes totally public. Not only that, it goes to the governor and council, and the governor and council won't make a decision unless that public document is inside the governor and council packet that says, this is the criteria for which I scored, and here are the scores. They actually present all the scores, and it becomes part of the official record. That's the, the criteria for which I'm looking at, and I'm trying to get a handle around that. And that's why I'm uncomfortable with it. That's just the reasoning, and I'm trying to work through the, the other piece, and I can't find it. But I'd like to, because negotiations, the legal.
Excuse me?
Go ahead.
General is standing over here, we're not.
We are not.
We're still in public.
We're discussing how to get into public.
Is there a problem with just moving the question? Are there enough people that would like to just vote on this now?
You could make that motion if you chose.
Sitting here a half an hour, talking about how we're gonna do it?
That, that, that is a, you are absolutely correct, we could do that. We were trying to sort through an issue which would allow us to address a question that we believe would have an, or could potentially have an adverse effect on somebody, so.
Because right now, we haven't, don't have a signed contract, and you go back and talk to them about some of the changes you want to make on their deadlines, they may say, we're not interested in that deadline, and then we may be back in the bidding process.
Correct.
So at this point, it's not public information, but bid, yes, because we haven't signed a contract yet.
Because the, the RFP does say that it doesn't become public until after the contract is awarded.
Then, then just to move things along, I make a motion, we take it off the table.
Second.
So, we need to let them know?
Take what off the table? I'm sorry, I just.
We tabled this motion.
We tabled this earlier in the meeting.
Yes.
And I'm just gonna take it off the table, so it's back, and then you can make whatever motion you want to do.
To go forward with the study.
I mean, right now, you can't make a decision, because it's on the table, and if we leave, then we don't have a decision at all.
Right.
So I'm just offering to take it off the table.
Oh, okay. I ju, I just wanted to make sure that I was clear on what we were doing.
That's all I'm doing is taking it off the table.
That's why we need to let, if there's any public out there.
Suzanne, you seconded that motion?
In favor?
This is what you call all in favor?
I thought I'd.
We're waiting to see if there's any public who is waiting for us to come out.
Oh, I didn't know there was any.
Um, there might be, I don't know.
Kathy Rummel, I don't think is waiting for an answer.
Kathy, in fairness, to bring you up to speed, just so you know where we're at, because everything that's gone on in here occurred in public session. There was a decision not to go into non-public. The item that was tabled is now back on the table.
No, we haven't voted yet.
Or, there's been a motion to put it back on the table, we're about to vote on that motion. Okay?
Oh, you just want to go home early.
That's why I didn't want to have.
All, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions?
The motion is now on the table.
Now there's, yes.
Yes.
What was the motion? The motion was the table?
I made the motion.
The original motion was to accept the superintendent's recommendation.
So the original motion was to go to the.
Recommendation.
Got it.
And then, when we went into our discussion, and we moved to table it.
So that's the motion on the.
Jenny made the motion, who seconded it, just to make sure that we know.
Way back when?
Way back me.
Do we have that?
Twas me, twas me the automatic seconder.
Shall we get you, shall we get you a T-shirt? All right, any further discussion regarding the motion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion to accept the superintendent's recommendation? All in favor? Opposed, abstentions?
You voted three times.
Diana's recused herself. As opposed to abstaining, right?
Right.
Okay. So we have seven, one, oh, right?
As long as I'm one of the ones.
Yes.
I'm not sure that number's right.
Did I miss?
Do this again.
Okay, all in favor? All opposed, abstentions? Okay, so, here's what I have. I have six, one, one abstention, Laurie, and one recusal. I am.
Motion passes.
Motion passes. I need a motion to.
Before we have a motion to adjourn, could I just ask that we be able to find out, from whoever we have to find out, whether, what we can go into non-public when we have RFPs, so that next time we'll know?
I, since I have to have a conversation, I will use this example and try to get some feedback.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I can now make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Otto.
Otto?
I heard her.
So, so, so we're no longer Suzanne, we're now Otto? Is that with an O or an N? All in favor? Opposed, abstentions?
And we got documents to sign.
Don't forget to.
Don't forget, you need to sign, and you all need to use the same pen, right?
Blue.
Blue.
I like purple.
Purple?